Good evening. Thank you for joining us here at the Brockton School Committee meeting. My name is Kathleen Ayers and today is Tuesday, October 17th, and it being 7:05 I will open this meeting. We're gathered here in the George Ron Little Theater, Brockton High School, and I will now establish a quorum. Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
And I'm here as the vice chair as well, so we've established a quorum. I need to also read into the record, in addition to attending, the public can view this meeting by way of television on Comcast Channel 8 and 107.1 HD version, and online via the link www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. Let's begin with the first item on the agenda, which is a hearing of visitors. Tonight, we have two hearing of visitors. The first one to be called up is a Ms. Kim Langford.
Pledge allegiance.
Oh geez, we have to say the pledge of allegiance, my bad. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and my apologies. So Ms. Langford?
Thank you in advance for your time. So tonight I wanted to talk about two different topics. First, I wanted to discuss what is called the Municipal and School Facility Study and Master Plan. So in my several bits of research that I've been doing here about the city and specifically Brockton Public Schools, I came across one of these studies that was published back on December 3rd, 2018, by Mayor Carpenter's team. So I specifically bring up this specific study and master plan because I have seen a trend when it comes to the type of studies and PDFs that have been put out by the Brockton Public Schools. This specific plan that was put out back in 2018 was very in-depth. You could see a lot of data, you could see a lot of information, whether it be financial, socioeconomic, every single school was looked into from a safety perspective, risk perspective. It was very helpful for me as a resident, it was very helpful for those that I shared it to, but when I looked at the more recent ones, there was nothing geographical, there was no birth trends, there was no historical data, there was no future data. So feedback that I would give is to look at this specific plan from 2018 and go back to how we have been presenting information. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was the Massachusetts Public Record Law. So I will be making this request in writing, so that way, in addition to me requesting this in person, it's also in writing. I want to be getting all of the financial information in Excel format, so I can continue to develop the dashboard that the Brockton Public School and residents deserve, because the PDF is just not helpful. I want to be getting that type of information and the analysis developed for our residents. So if you could please get that to me, under the Massachusetts Public Record Law, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. Next up, we have Mr. George Brickhouse.
I'm gonna try to jump on the three minutes there, but it looks like the three minutes is on the clock. My name is George Brickhouse. I'm the coordinator of a program called CAT, Critical Analytical Thinking, and I've been before the school board a number of times trying to get the program instituted into the high school. The program is based on the concept that our students, right now, don't have in the classroom the learning process, not knocking teachers or educators in any way whatsoever, but just saying that there's a learning process that can be implemented into the school system. And my research of three years ago started with the United States being ranked 13th in the country in terms, in the world in terms of education. So I took a look over in Europe, in Sweden, in Germany, and then I said, let me go to the other side of the world, to Dubai, which were all ranked ahead of the United States in learning, and put together a program encompassing the best from each of their programs that they already have in place. First off, I'd like to give a heads up to Tony Rodriguez for the last meeting that we were in, and Tony put a check on a program that might have been just run through at another time, that Brockton already has in place, a rehabilitation program. And the fact that he saw that and said, let's put a hole on that, let's take a look at it, I have to give you props on that, because that's something that we need to be doing in terms of the funding resource that have been misaligned elsewhere. Another focus that we need to take a real quick look on is that Proverbs 22:6. Train up a child in the way that he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it. We need to take a look at how our youngsters are being raised, once they're getting into school, not just the high school, but once they're getting into school. We need to come together as a community and maybe base other aspects as to how we are implementing them in the educational aspect of our children. We have outmoded teaching methods that are really tied into what some people would say is a, is an attitude of colonization that has been implemented in the schools and the politics in Brockton. And last and final, three minutes sucks. The Boston Globe, Monday, September 25th, 2023, State seeks ways to bolster charter school offerings. When the second charter school comes up in Brockton, don't be surprised, because the state is looking at putting more funding into the charter schools. We have an opportunity to make Brockton a learning place in the public school system if we just choose to do so. The program is CAT, if you have any interest in it, then by all means, please find some time to talk to me about it and what we can do to help make Brockton Public Schools the place that we all want it to be. God bless all.
Thank you, Mr. Brickhouse. Moving on from hearing of visitors, we're going to go to our third agenda item, which is the report of superintendents of schools, so I will pass it off to you.
Madam vice chair, if I could...
Oh my god, I didn't even know you were here.
Oh, I want to apologize, I was participating in the prostate cancer awareness with the Brockton area branch of the NAACP, so I'm sorry I'm a little late, but thank you for handling that, thank you.
Let's swap our places.
Thank you.
Yep.
Again, I want to thank the vice chair for handling the duties, I want to thank the hearing of visitors, folks that spoke, I want to thank Attorney Mello for filling in for attorney's spot of foot as well tonight. We will go on to Agenda Item 3, which is Report of Superintendent Schools, Dr. Cobb. Dr. Cobb, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, School Committee. I'd like to start off our Teaching and Learning Report with the report from the student representative, Anthony Vega.
Hi, sorry, to those who don't know me, I'm Anthony Vega, the student representative, and every time I attend these meetings, I do just a quick synopsis, a quick synopsis of the day and the life of a student, and then maybe voice a student's opinion at the end. So, here it is. So to kick off the middle of the first term, the student government has started a Spirit Week, which is a fun week of activities dedicated to enriching the lives of the students. For example, yesterday, Monday, was the appropriate white lie shirt, where they wore a white shirt with a lie on it. Today was Twin Tuesday, where students would come in pairs dressed similarly. Wednesday, they would dress as senior citizens. Thursday, surfers or bikers, and then Friday is Boxer Pride Day, where everyone would wear their boxer gear and kind of showcase their boxer pride, and the seniors would then take their class photo in Marcellano Stadium. Next up is, the girls had their, the girls soccer team has had their senior night, and it was great to see the support of the different families, friends and fans that showed up. It just showed that the athletics, especially the girls soccer, is not fading at all, it's as strong as ever. And although the team did lose in the end, it was a very emotional game, and it's one that the players and fans will certainly remember for a time to come. And then other upcoming events, upcoming senior nights include the field hockey, October 16th, which was yesterday, the girls soccer, the 12th, and then the girls volleyball, October 27th. So please show up to support, and that would be very appreciated. And then there's Band Senior Day, October 28th, where the band will accompany the middle school band programs and kind of take them through the day of what it's like to be in the high school marching band. It'll include football, fun, and then memories, and then just kind of showcase the future of the program, which I think is very important. And then as far as student feedback, in terms of trajectory of the school, especially with all of the new policies going on, I think overall it's heading in the right direction. But after talking to some faculty and other students, there is like a point of interest or two that may be want to, like, excuse me, and we want to bring it to the school board's attention, and that includes maybe adding some extra staff to regulate students wandering halls and disrupting education, which is a tough enough job already, especially with a lack of faculty and 4,000 students in the building. And then, I didn't add it in the PowerPoint, I just came from the school council meeting. A lot of parents, and I agree that there needs to be more student outreach, more like personalization towards each student, which is still hard to do with that many students, but that's something that would be ideal in the community. Thank you.
Members of the committee, any questions for the student representative? Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony. Great presentation. So just a quick question, the Student Advisory Council at the high school, do we have one already established for this year?
Yes, we do, actually. I've met with them already a couple weeks ago, and they, that's why we started the rolling rallies on Fridays and some of the school spirit things that they talked about, so...
Perfect.
They're active and engaged.
So it was, we as a school committee are supposed to be meeting with them, I believe, every other month, so if we can start coordinating that moving forward. But I know, it was brought to my attention through MASK, so they had something posted where the school committee should be meeting with the student advisory. I believe it's every other month. I can get more info on it, but they just had it out in their newsletter, so we can ask more questions in a couple of weeks when we go to the conference. But I think that's one way of listening to our students, getting some feedback, but it's always wonderful seeing a lot of stuff that's going on with our seniors and our students, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Azak. Any other members of the committee have any questions for the student representative? Phenomenal job, Anthony, thank you, thank you. Dr. Cobb?
Well, I'll just comment on the, you know, the comments you made about the students wandering the corridors and more adults in the building. We just finally got back from the City Hall, the forums to hire, I have a plan to hire 12 security specialists, safety and security specialists that will be in the corridors, the radios, they'll monitor the bathrooms, and we'll sweep the corridors between periods to get the students out of the hallway, so you'll see more adults in the corridors soon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next presentation will be Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment, MCAS, 560 Club Honorees, and Deputy Superintendent Sean Wolder will take the floor.
You see how long the day has been? Well, good morning, everyone, how are you? Let me try that again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is nice to see all of you here tonight, and we are here with some really great news, and I think it's so important for us to celebrate the wonderful things that happened in Brockton and happened for our students. And in this particular case, we are celebrating students based on their MCAS results from last year. As you know, every year, our students in grades three through eight and grade 10 have to take the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment exam, which is the MCAS, and based on their scores, we have a celebration tonight, because the highest score, scaled score that a student can get is a 560. And we are here to celebrate students who did just that. And so, there are 400,000, and someday, my little friend, no, don't be sorry, he's celebrating with us, and someday he probably will be in the club as well, so this is exciting. Please don't, don't apologize for them having a voice. So considering that nearly 400,000 students across the state have taken MCAS, our 14 students are among the top performers in the state, and so that is really powerful, and when we... Absolutely. So we have the pleasure of starting what we are calling the 560 Club, which is the students, again, who have got the highest possible skilled score on MCAS, and this is our first year of doing this, so these are our founding members of the club, so we're going to be excited to do this in years to come. And so we're going to also mention, some of our students scored really high on their student growth percentile, and so you're going to hear 99s and 98s, and so when you think the highest you can go is 100, and they're moving like that, we have some pretty incredible students in this district, and they are definitely worth celebrating. So we're going to start the club off with our English Language Arts portion of the test, and these students, there were 2,630 students statewide who received a 560, and we are going to hear about the ones that are from Brockton. And so the first one is Jayla Andre, is Jayla here? And I'm going to name everyone, whether they're in the space or not, because you need to hear all of their names. If you are here, we're going to ask that you come down, we have a trophy for you. We have a certificate, and we have photographers that way, who are going to take your picture. And at the end of all of this, our students who are honored tonight, we're going to take them out into the foyer so that we can get a picture of all of them. All right. And as Jayla goes back to her seat, she, her student growth percentile was 97. And these are students from Brockton High School who took the test in 10th grade. We have Ashley Gomes, who also got a student growth percentile of 99. Sylvie Stocko, Sylvie also had a 99, student growth percentile. From the Asheville, taking this test in grade six, we have Shayla Norris. Shayla got a 98 on her student growth percentile. From the Davis, 6th grade, we have Michaela Hayward. Michaela got a 95 on her student growth percentile. Emily is now a student at Brockton High School, she received a 99 on her student growth percentile. I don't think she's here. From South, grade six, Lucy Homer. Lucy received a 98 on her student growth percentile. Moving on to the math portion of the test, there were 2,372 students in the state who received a 560 in math, and here are our students from Brockton High School, Michael Michael is not here, so receiving the honor on his behalf?
Mom.
All right. It's his mom? Okay. She's like, she's like, "Don't do it, don't do it." From the Angelo, grade four, we have Rain De Silva Qualls. Rain received a 99, student growth percentile. Also from the Angelo, Parker Faroli. Parker received a 97, student growth percentile. From the Angelo, grade three, Enzo Timas.
Enzo.
Enzo, I'm sorry, Enzo Timas. And remember, 3rd grade is the first time you take it, so already starting in the right And from Asheville, grade six, we have James Gavazzi. James received a 99, growth percentile. I don't think James is here. And lastly, for the 560 Club in science, on the science portion of the test, 579 students statewide, we had one, and that is Tuzi Zhang. Tuzi is in 10th grade, VHS. So I want to again say congratulations to all of our founding members of the 560 Club, And just so that we know, in the weeks to come, we will have at-school-based celebrations for another 185 students who received a 550 to a 559 as a scaled score, and had student growth percentiles in the high 90s as well, so our celebrations will continue. We do want to be able to take a picture of all of the students.
Good evening again, everyone. So, again, just a huge, another huge round of applause for our students, please. And if we could think about just the incredible amount of energy, time, effort, and attention that it takes to achieve these results, we also want to celebrate our educators, our families, our central office staff, our school committee. It takes a village, it takes a village. So I'm Sean Precious, I am one of the assistant superintendents, and I am going to just walk us through some high-level trends as a district in terms of how we did on MCAS last year. And so, let's get into it. So just in terms of a few headlines, as we looked at the data, we wanted to draw a through line between what the Teaching and Learning Team has been talking with the school committee about for several years now, but there's been a lot of investments in the district around HQIM, or High Quality Instructional Materials. And you will see that in many areas, BPS is improving, and those investments in our curriculum are paying off for our students. We're going to look at some charts and tables tonight, and what's really important to know is we look at most of the data, it's, there's similar trend lines to the state and districts that are similar to Brockton. that are similar to Brockton. So as we compare how Brockton is doing relative to other urban districts, we're in line with their performance. And then our academic and social-emotional supports are having the greatest impact on our most vulnerable students in those elementary and middle grades. So wanted to lift up not just the pure academic work that we're doing, but also all of the work that's happening to support our social and emotional and our mental health needs as well. Okay. This is where, when I practiced in the mirror, the font was much bigger on my screen than it is here. But I'm going to walk us through quickly, you can see that the vast majority of our elementary schools are improving. What this is showing is a multitude of data sets. There's MCAS performance, there are how students are doing with reaching English language proficiency, there is attendance, multiple things that are rolled into that rank improvement, that column that is colored. And you can see that the schools that are in green have made some growth, and that the vast majority of our elementary schools are on an improvement trajectory, which is really exciting. And again, as we think about our academic and social-emotional supports, and the incredible work of our educators and our administrators, and the partnership we have with our families and students, we are really proud of these results. This is how our middle schools did. You can see a similar trend here with the vast majority of our middle schools making some improvement. Again, as you look at that column that is mostly in green, nearly all of our middle schools have made growth. And looking at our high schools, we did flatline here at Brockton High, and we do have other high schools that are not on this chart for different reasons. It may be there wasn't, there isn't a large enough end size or a large enough student population in the school. Or if you think about like our Promise College and Career Academy, they only had ninth grade last year. And at the high school level, we primarily test in 10th grade. So that's how we did with Brockton High. Just going to get into just some of the performance here, lots of numbers. So on the left-hand side is our ELA performance as a district. You can see in grades three through eight, there is different percentages of students that are meeting and exceeding expectations, starting all the way over on the left-hand side, that is the percentage of students that were meeting and exceeding in 2019. And then it goes to 2022, which is two years ago, and then this most current year, 2023. And the last two columns compare the change over the last four years since before the pandemic, and also the change in just the last year. And those three rows compare us to the state, the second row compares us to urban districts that are similar to Brockton, and that third row, where it says BPS, is our Brockton Public Schools' performance. And so if you remember a few minutes ago, I said our data largely follows the same trend line as the state and as other urban districts like Brockton. And you can see some of that playing out with our ELA data. So for example, over the last four years, there has been a decline, we were in the middle of a pandemic, across the state by 10 percentage points. And Brockton, there was a decline, but it wasn't as precipitous as statewide. So that's actually some good news in terms of how Brockton's doing. The middle table is how we did with math, and it follows the same format as ELA. So we have grades three through eight at the top, and we have grade 10. You can see the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding expectations. And then those last two columns show a change over the last four years and the change over the last year. And you can see by one percentage point, we are slightly beating the state, and by two percentage points, other districts that are similar to Brockton. So again, we've got some good news there in terms of progress. And then this very last column is our science for grades five, eight, and 10. So that's the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding expectations on MCAS. And then we'll get into a little bit of some of our gaps by student group. And so we're looking here at elementary, grades three, four, and five. And across this table, we've got different student groups and how they performed. We do have some gaps. So first, little or no change from last year in the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. We anticipated this because, as many of you know, we have a new curriculum at the elementary level. And so we did anticipate that there would be a little bit of a gap as teachers are getting up to speed with implementing those materials. And we're excited, though, about the progress that we know students are going to be making as they deepen their knowledge of that curriculum. And then for math, we did see an increase. Really proud of the work that's happening in elementary mathematics. You can see a four-point increase there from 2022 to 2023. And you can see that we still have some work to do with our gaps. So that's elementary. This is middle school. And again, similar format, you can see 2022 compared to 2023. And then you can see the breakdown across a variety of different student groups. We had a slight improvement in grades six through eight in the percentage of students that were meeting and exceeding expectations. And during that same period, the percentage of middle school students increased slightly more than the state. So again, we've got some progress there. Our middle school students are improving faster than the state average in the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding expectations in math as well, which is, again, continuing this trend of improvement and incremental growth for our students. And then this last slide here is our high school data. And you can see at the high school level is where we have the most work to do as a district. The percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding expectations in English language arts did drop substantially. And so we have some work to do here. You can also see the gaps that we have for our students groups. We also dropped slightly in math as well. And again, you can see the breakdown across different student groups. So first of all, just want to bring us back to the celebration that we had with our students just a few minutes ago. Again, we've got some work to do, but there is a lot to celebrate. And again, the progress that we're making as a district is a partnership and an effort and a collaboration between so many different groups in our community. And so we're going to pause here, and I will do my best to answer questions folks may have. This is when I will remind the school committee, my mother is at home watching right now.
Thank you, Dr. I'm going to start with the vice chair, please.
Thank you, Dr. Precious. This is great. I'm going to go back to the meeting exceeding expectations where the number's basically there, yes. So we gather this data, we analyze this data. My biggest concern is the science, because there's a lot of red there. So my question is, once we analyze the data, what do we do with it? Like, what is our next steps with this information as a district?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I think, one, I think we're still in process with some of that analysis, and having conversations with our teaching and learning team, and a variety of folks that are out in the field supporting the implementation of our Amplify Science curriculum. And primarily, it's going to be, I would say, a little bit of a deep dive into schools and classrooms where we are seeing success, and studying, like, what are those teachers doing? What are the moves that are happening? And then trying to lift that up and see how we can replicate that across other classrooms. There's also, as you can see, a trend, you know, beyond Brockton. And so we will also be collaborating with our DESI partners around this, and listening and learning to what other districts are doing as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Any other members have any questions relative to what Dr. has presented to us tonight? Thank you, Dr.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone.
Next matter on the agenda is items to refer to subcommittee. Are there any matters before us tonight that we can refer to subcommittee at this time? Ms. Azak, please.
Can we, sorry, can we schedule a policy subcommittee? We do need to get these policies in place. So if we can schedule that sooner rather than later. So do we need our attorneys present for that? Or, because I know in the past, when we've worked on policies, our attorneys and mask have worked on the policies with us. So just a basic draft of them, and then...
Attorney Mello, what are your thoughts on that? Ms. Azak had asked, do you think legal counsel should be here for a policy subcommittee?
Creating policies.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I think that makes sense, yeah, for an initial discussion.
Okay.
Particularly if that's consistent with the past practice.
I think it's been a while since we've created policies, but I think with everything that's happened the past few weeks, I know we've discussed putting some policies in place. So if we can just, you know, maybe schedule something. I know that the vice chair, that's a subcommittee of the committee, so if we can schedule something.
Vice chair, do you have a date certain for that, or proposed date certain?
We're probably going to have to have an extra meeting next Tuesday. Maybe we can tag it on to that.
Okay.
Sounds good to me on the 24th. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'm scheduling music, arts, and athletics on the 24th. If that subcommittee, if we can meet at 5:00, and then we can roll into the policy subcommittee.
5:00 PM, we'll start that subcommittee meeting. Are there any other subcommittees that would be meeting in the near future or a week from today? Mr. Homer, please.
In the near future, I think we want to reconvene Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee. We met recently, but I know there's still some outstanding things we want to talk about, probably not the 24th, so I think we'd be pushing it into the month of November, probably the beginning of November. So I'll try and put something on the bulletin for that as well, for the first week of November, if I can.
Thank you, Ms. Homer.
Actually, it'll be the second week because of election being on that Tuesday, the first Tuesday of November.
And just point of information on that, we'll get to it when we get to new business. But November 14th, we would not be able to have a meeting in here because of the Brockton High School Drama Club will be using the little theater. So we will be going to the unknown school, the theater room that we've used in the past. So when we get to new business, I would need a motion on that. But Mr. Homer, we can figure out what date, and we could all utilize the unknown for a subcommittee meeting if need be. Thank you. Any other members of the committee relative to the subcommittee? Seeing none, we'll continue to move on. And again, we do have city CFO Troy Clarkson is here tonight. I want to thank you, Mr. CFO, for everything that your team is doing out of the city hall, and also all of the finance department, the school department as well. Open Architects is the group that is being paid for by DESI. I know that you and Dr. Cobb, you meet with me on a regular basis, and Open Architects is two dedicated people working with us on that. And I think we're going to get an introduction on an update relative to those folks as well. But thank you. And the floor is yours, Mr. Clarkson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to once again be before the committee to provide you an update on our ongoing collaboration and the status of the finances of the Brockton Public Schools. But as the chair mentioned, I would like to introduce you tonight, you've heard, at the last several meetings that I've been at, you've heard me reference our work with Open Architects. They are a consultant that are being provided by DESI, but they're working very closely with us. Rather than an investigative consultant, they're actually here to collaborate and to help fill in some gaps for us. We're working to really build more of an infrastructure and have workflows and processes that are documented here. And so Open Architects has been a great partner in doing that. They attend many meetings with us virtually. We met for a couple of hours this afternoon, as has become our process with the school and the city finance teams. So with us tonight is TJ Plant, and TJ will give you his background, but he's widely respected in the area of municipal finance. He, up until recently, before he joined Open Architects, was my counterpart in the city of Springfield, also spent time as the school business manager in Springfield. So he comes to us with significant experience and wisdom. The other person with whom we work at Open Architects is its CEO and founder Seth Racine, who also had tenure as a school business manager in another community. So the people with whom we are working are experienced and have helped lead communities through difficult times. And so we're very grateful for their partnership. And I'll turn this over to TJ where he can give an introduction, both of his professional work, but the scope of services that Dr. Cobb and I have been working with TJ for his work here. So I'll turn it over to you, TJ. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, Troy. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the school committee. I know it's kind of a tough time for Brockton at the moment, trying to go through some of the challenge that you're facing. Just going to give you a little bit of my background. I've got 24 years, public sector, public finance experience. I worked in Ways and Means at the State House. I've worked at the Department of Public Health as Deputy Budget Director. I struck out on the municipal side when I went to Springfield back in 2007, when they were under a state mandated control board because they were on, they were essentially bankrupt, on the verge of bankruptcy. I went there to help turn the city around and kind of be part of the changes in the finance structure. And then after about a year or two, almost three in that, they asked me to become the CFO of the Springfield Public Schools. I am a licensed school business administrator. I did that for about four years. Then I went back to the city as the chief administrative officer. I was the chief procurement officer for a time. I'm certified in procurement. And this opportunity came about when DESI reached out to the founder of Open Architects, Seth Racine, who was my budget director 15-plus years ago in Springfield, so it's a small world. And Seth called me and was like, "We're looking to help out Brockton. Do you have any interest?" And then DESI called and said, "We'd like to hire Open Architects to help Troy and Dr. Cobb, and the whole school district for that matter, you know, look forward and figure out where the process breakdowns occurred, what process improvements we can do in order to prevent this from happening again." And then also, so we're going to do a deep dive into the payroll, into grants, into accounts payable, accounts receivable, into purchase orders, and really come up with a lot of recommendations and standard operating procedures that if somebody is out, someone can pick up and just kind of move forward with doing a task. Right now, that there is a void in that area, and I know you are absent a CFO and a deputy CFO at the moment, and are looking to post a school business administrator, I can't urge you enough to get that person on the ground. But in the meantime, DESI has approved me to modify our scope of work to help Dr. Cobb and the rest of the school committee and the district focus on the needs of the children and actually get some of the CFO-type services done. So the scope is really was to come in and kind of help, you know, look at the current year, see if the deficit is real and what to do about that, do multi-year financial forecasting, and then look at fiscal '25, and then look at all of our systems, position control, all the things that we can do to improve outcomes in the district. So that is kind of what is going to happen, but still a little backburner right now because of the actual day-to-day needs that the business office and the school department is needing and wanting right now. And so Troy and Dr. Cobb and I are in pretty much lockstep on kind of where we're going. I have an entry plan that at some point I can present to the school committee if you're interested of kind of what it is we're going to be digging into on that. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. This is very similar in a scary way of when I became CFO of the Springfield Public Schools, we had a very similar situation of deficits and just, you know, making sure that the staff is adequately trained and briefed on what they need to do. And so I'm actually looking forward to the challenge in helping this body, and certainly the superintendent, make improvements.
Mr. Plant, this is the mayor, and I also serve as chair of the school committee. I want to thank you and your counterpart, Mr. Racine, and Open Architects. And I have to give a shout-out to Commissioner Riley from DESI for supporting this, actually funding funding this. And I concur with you that we are going to need to, as a collective body, get someone, whoever he or she is, to be in their day-to-day operations. But in the meantime, I know, because I meet with Jim and I meet with Troy on a regular basis, I know that you and your experience and your professionalism has really been a godsend. So truly thank you. And at this time, if there's any members of the Committee that have any questions for Mr. Plant? Seeing none, again, I want to thank you and Mr. Racine and Open Architects and DESI. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to help in any way. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, just to continue with a brief update on activities that we've engaged in since I last saw you here. We continue to update that budget tracker that we've developed. I wanted to say a few words about that. So these numbers are updated as of today, and I have provided this document to both the school and the City IT Directors. And so I do anticipate that sometime tomorrow, this document will be up on both websites so that the public can read it and understand it as well. I did want to talk a little bit about how this document was generated and what it represents because I mentioned it when we first created it. But I do believe there's some confusion about what you're seeing, what this data is. So because there was not a lot of information available to you about the spending on the School Committee, I thought it was very important to give you an unfiltered and accurate depiction of what we see on a daily basis. So the information that makes up this report is not interpreted or changed or in any way by anyone at either the school or the City. This is a representation of the information that is in Munis. And when I first presented it to you, I mentioned, but I'll mention again tonight, that this does not mirror exactly the budget that you voted. But it is what was created in Munis at the beginning of the fiscal year in the School Department. So we will be improving this. We'll be working with TJ and his team. They have a phenomenal dashboard. If you go on the Open Architects website, you can see work they've done for other communities. But while that's being built, I really thought it was important to have something that we could look at that gave us a sense of where we're at. So, and I am thrilled that members of the public and members of this body have scrutinized this report and have questions because that's why we created it. But it's important to understand what we're looking at. So there are some items in here where there may be somewhere that wasn't a line that was in the School Committee budget book that's in this report. Or there's a line that's in the, that was voted by the School Committee and the budget book that's not in here. And again, so that's because we wanted to give you a representation of what we saw when we first took a look at this. And so we will be making changes and updating it. The most important fact, though, is the overall spending amount does represent the overall spending amount of the budget that was voted by the School Committee. So today, based on the fact that today's the 16th of October, we should be 29.51% spent through the fiscal year, and it looks like we're just over 26%. And again, this report goes into lots more detail by school and by location. We are monitoring the spending on a regular basis, and so we're on track. There is some hiring that's still going on, as Dr. Cobb's mentioned. We're working hard to refine that process for evaluating the budget and making sure that we have the money to hire the people. Just because a position was funded last year does not mean there's money available to fund it this year. That's a logical statement that somebody could or should say, "Well, if you funded it last year, then there must be money this year." But that's not the case. That's why we're having discussions about a deficit because there were positions that were hired and paid without funding behind them. So it's not as simple as just saying, "Okay, this position was here last year, we can have it again." So when someone in the administration requests to fill a position, we take a look at what's committed thus far, what the staffing is in that budget area, what the total cost of the filling of the position or positions represents. We run that out to June 30th, and if there are sufficient funds, then we approve the form and send it back. So it is a fairly detailed process. During our meeting today, we further refined the process to try to make it as efficient and collaborative as possible, but as you might imagine, we're building this process from the ground up as well. And so we're doing the best we can to work quickly but also accurately because all of us, now that we know, now that we know that there was a budget deficit, we all have a duty and a fiduciary duty to make sure that when we fill a position, there's funds behind it. And so, yes, it takes time to do it, but yes, it's critically important to do it so that we're getting through this year with sufficient funds to do the kind of work that results in the amazing results that we saw tonight. And as Dr. Cobb said at our joint meeting today, and as TJ said at our meeting today, that's the main goal of everyone, including the folks on the city finance side, is to give you the tools that you need to be able to create the results that we saw tonight. So overall, budget tracking trending positively. We will continue to work with TJ to create more detail and to create a tool that more accurately reflects the School Committee budget. But this is, I think, a significant development over what was being used before. And finally, when I was here the last time, I believe it was School Committee member Sullivan asked some questions about transportation.
Which one? There's a few.
Last time I was here, I believe School Committee member Timothy Sullivan asked some questions about transportation, and I committed to following up on that. I did. I met last week with Dr. Murray, who runs the Transportation Department, and some finance folks from the schools and the City. We're doing a deep dive into that. Dr. Murray has done an excellent job, I think, on his own, maintaining some figures, keeping costs down. They've actually restructured the positions in the Transportation Department. So I can tell you with confidence that the Transportation Department is not a source of the deficit for us. They're keeping their costs under pretty good control. But what I plan to do in the coming weeks, with the assent of the Chair, of course, is to make a detailed presentation to you on the transportation operation and compare the spending and the projected spending at the end of the year to the non-net school spending number that was provided. And then we'll carve out the special education out of district costs and the McInnes-Advento homeless costs so that you can see where those cost centers are. And that's the kind of work that we're doing on a regular basis. TJ and Open Architects will be helping with that. But if you have those kinds of questions about really doing deep dives into other areas, then we're happy to oblige. And I'll continue to make these regular reports so that we can share the work that we're doing together, but that also all of us can demonstrate that we're working together in the best interests of the fiscal stability of the School Department, which of course I know is the goal that all of us hold dear. So that's it. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before I open it up to the Committee members, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear. So the line items in Munis may not mirror the line items in the budget, but the total dollar amount that was approved from the budget does match the total dollar amount in Munis.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to open it up. I'll start with the Vice Chair, please.
That was one of my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's great. The other question I had was, you know, where we are done with surprises on this Committee? And so my question for you is, are you absolutely sure, can we be absolutely sure that everything that we are paying on, everything that we do owe on, everything that we are financially responsible for is in fact in Munis?
Well, I believe so, yes. I don't like surprises either.
Yeah.
And we've had a lot of them. So we are confident, yes, that, I'm just trying to run through all the issues that we encounter on a regular basis. Even grants and revolving funds are maintained and are not part of this. But as I've mentioned before, we're trying to, we're expanding the reporting to include grants and revolving funds so that you can see them. So they're not in this report, but those are tracked in Munis, and that's something, again, that TJ and his team are working closely with us on. When we sit as a group, how many seats are at that table, Dr. Cobb? Maybe 20?
I think that's the chair. About 14.
So there's people representing auditing and accounting and budget and financial analysis on the City side, but on your team, we have ever-expanding, so a couple of different grant folks in accounts payable and payroll and financial analysts, and of course, Dr. Cobb's and some of his senior staff. So we're trying to cast a wide net so that everybody's at the table, and we're making sure that we're not going to uncover any surprises. I can't assure you 100% that there aren't any more surprises out there, but I know in the last couple of months, we have really dug deeply to try to figure out exactly where the money is being spent and making sure that the individual schools have the tools they need to do their jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll go to Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. I just have a question. So I know for the budget, we received a sparrow-bound little booklet, and we usually get like a four-inch binder with all the schools and all our expenses and all, just the budget for the whole district. Do you know if they have those for us? We never got them, and I know we've asked a few times, and I was told we were going to get them, I think, in September or August. Things have changed. I wasn't sure if they were in that department and they just weren't given to us. I know I cross-referenced with that binder. I've been looking at the old one to try to look some stuff up, but I do use it as a reference throughout the year anytime we have questions on stuff. If we can look into that, because I know the Committee, I know I'd like the, again, it's got all the schools, every school's expenses, everything broken down for us, and we just never got that. We only got the little spiral booklet.
So, yes, I can answer, from my perspective, I have one of those. So for your next meeting, or before your next meeting, we can certainly make copies. I'm guessing it's the, we're talking about the same thing. But that School Committee budget book is the document that we use to then compare this to, and that's where we saw that there wasn't necessarily a direct correlation between what's in Munis and what's in that book. And so that's been helpful to us to understand your priorities for spending, and so it's helped shaping our projections on where we need to make sure funds are available. So we'll make sure you get that.
It just helps. I know, I'm not sure what other Committee members refer to it, but it just, for example, tell me one of my schools what the positions are, how much they're paying, just so in case we do need to look at something. You know, every school's going to need something different. So it just, I like it. If we can, if I can get that, I wouldn't mind picking it up from Central if I needed to, but I know we've been waiting for those.
I'll just comment on that. I just want to agree with Troy that, you know, those notebooks aren't necessarily as accurate as the spreadsheet that he's presenting, and there's one for every school that shows you expenses, you know, each month. So that's a more accurate representation of what they're actually spending and what the positions are.
No, that I get. It's just the, for example, I'm just going to put it out there, say Brookfield School, that's one of my assigned schools. It will tell me every single position at Brookfield School. Every position, it breaks it down per school. This is just going to give me one lump sum per school, where in years past, we've always had it, every single school, every single position that's in there. I mean, if, again, we just get a lump sum, whereas the big three-ring binder that we've gotten for years breaks it down, so it makes it easier. So if something comes up, we can look and say, "Okay, you know what? You know, this school might need this, but another school might need something else." And it just makes you better understand what every single school is looking for and what they have at their schools broken down. So rather than looking at a dollar amount, I see, you know, this is how many nurses I have, this is how many custodians I have, this is how many food service people I have, teachers, specialists, things like that. So I was just wondering, like I said, we usually get them and we haven't gotten them, and I thought we'd get them by the summertime.
Mr. Clarkson, can you just have the copies made of that binder you have?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Homer, please.
Just to piggyback home on Ms. Azak, was just saying too, I think, you know, it would help just when we have constituents that have questions about, you know, their kids' experience in the school too, and what they're coming home saying, you know, "I don't have a teacher," or "I had a substitute," or "there's a paraprofessional covering my class today," that kind of thing. And I know what you mentioned a moment ago, Mr. Clarkson, you talked about the money and the staff from previous years. It doesn't mean that there's money available this year. So just for the, for public, just to put it out there for the public to absorb too as well, when we made the choice to make the budget cuts and to cut, you know, hundreds of positions, the goal in doing that was to reduce the costs for staffing, to bring it in line so that we would have appropriate number of staffing for a reduced number of students in the schools. And I think one of the concerns that I have is just that there's always a natural rollover, there's a turnover, and people might find different jobs in different districts and things like that. So there's things that we can't account for. But I think the biggest concern is getting qualified educators into the classrooms. And I know, we're not asking you to pull rabbits out of your hat and find somebody, but I know, you know, qualified educators are really hard to come by, and I would just really stress that it's of maximum importance that if we have a qualified candidate that could take a classroom and be put into that position, I think we need to make that expenditure, and we need to have a teacher in front of the class. And if that means we have to look at something else that might have to go without and starve another category or another line item, I think we have to do that versus having students sitting in the cafeterias at the high school with no teacher, or God forbid, you know, having kids who are not getting services that they're required to do, which is going to cost us money on the back end. We're going to pay for it one way or another. So I think it's really important that we streamline that process and get people into the classrooms as fast as possible. Thanks.
That's an excellent point. And to follow up on that, when we conduct our evaluation, we're looking at the money as it's currently allocated. But as I mentioned, the first time I stood before you, the actual budget that the School Committee voted was in four very broad categories. You have the ability, and we can talk more about that, to move money around as you see fit, provided we pay the required obligations, you know, to keep the lights on and to fulfill our contracts with the BEA and the other unions. But there is some discretion that you have as the School Committee to move money around if you determine that there are priorities that are not being met. And so as we are able to have a detailed and meaningful conversation about spending priorities because we have the tools like these, we certainly can talk about that. And if you look at, on this first page, actually, so the number for teachers is a little below the target, and I know that that's because we're still staffing up, but there are, we're at 24.62%, if you see that in teachers. I know that's a broad category, but we're about a little less than 5% below the target. And so when the overall spending in that category is 110 million, you know, 5% is in the millions of dollars. So there are opportunities to continue to staff up, but stay within our spending. And so, and we recognize that. And so those are discussions we can continue to have as the weeks unfold.
Thank you, Mr. Homer. Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm having a difficult time understanding why we have this hiring process when this body didn't vote on... process when this body didn't vote on our hiring process dealing with your office. So, if this body approved with the budget that we have, I'm just putting a number out there, 1,500 positions according to our budget, but we only have 1,000 positions filled. So, there's still 500 just floating out there. Why do we have this process of trying to check if we have the money when we already approved for these positions?
That's an excellent question.
And I want to know who is responsible for trying to implement this because it has to come before this body. Like, you don't, like, not to say it's you, pointing the finger, you don't have that authority. It's this governing body. So, I want to know how this came about because what's going on right now in our school is dangerous because we don't have educators in there. And the implications of, we're not going to, we're not saving a dime. It's going to cost us in the long run with fines and funding and so forth across the board. So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, like, why do we have this process? And if this process is a recommendation, how come it wasn't recommended to this body to make sure that that process is actually approved?
So, again, it's an excellent question. I think the answer lies in the authority possessed by the school committee versus the authority that both the general laws and you vest in a superintendent, not Dr. Jim Cobbs, but anyone who holds that position. And Attorney Mello is here from Murphy Hesse, so he can certainly jump in. But I'll answer the question based on my experience. The school committee possesses the authority to set policy governing anything that you deem is appropriate for policy. So, should you say that it's the policy of the school committee that there is or is not a position control process, that is well within your authority. And on that, Mr. Rodriguez, you're correct. But I think we're out offering an alternative opinion is, absent a specific policy by the school committee, I in fact do believe that the superintendent has the authority to institute a process for position control to ensure that positions have budgetary funds behind them. And I would further state that I would say, in this environment, if we don't do that, now that we know about a deficit, then all of us, the staff and the school committee members, we're not fulfilling our fiduciary duty and our duty to the kids to make sure that we have a school department that's supported by funding. So, I don't challenge in the least your ability as a school committee to set parameters on how you think the hiring process should be. But I don't think that absent a policy in place, that that means that the school department through its superintendent can't set a process so that we make sure that we're not in a deficit.
But we didn't put that process into place, but that process exists.
Right.
So, my question again is, how did that process come about? I still didn't get the answer for that.
I believe you did. I mean, I've talked about it from here several times.
We, we, we had a meeting, our last meeting, there was over 88 positions that's already budgeted for. So, why do we still have this process to make sure that there's money there? So, you're telling me that the budget that we approved, there's no money there?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm drawing a distinction between an approved budget and a position control process, which is very, very common in school districts and municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, to ensure that the funds that you approved are in fact being spent on the positions that are approved in the budget. I mean, I think we saw last year that you approved a budget. And in that budget was however many positions were approved, but the limits of that budget were not adhered to. And now, we're dealing with the aftermath. So, I think we're saying the same thing, just in a different way. Again, let me be clear, I'm not challenging the authority of the school committee to do your job. But I do believe in Massachusetts, this isn't just a Brockton discussion, this is sort of civics in general, that a superintendent is most certainly empowered to create a process for accountability, whether it's for filling positions or buying pencils and paper or running school buses. And so, in this specific instance, we put into place this position control suggested by my team and me, approved by Dr. Cobbs, so that we could come to you and say we had some financial accountability.
Again, that was superseded over this body.
Yeah, we can just respectfully disagree on that. I don't think anything that we've done in any way challenges or ignores the authority of the school committee. Should this school committee set a policy that we shouldn't have commission position control in place, then we'd stop what we're doing. I would urge you not to do that because I think that lack of control is what put us in this difficult position that we're in. But I'm not challenging your ability to do that. But I am suggesting that absent you taking affirmative action to set that policy, that doesn't limit the school superintendent's ability to put something in place.
Attorney Mello, do you mind just maybe giving a little context to this as well from a legalese standpoint?
Sure, Mayor. And I know this, I think this has been the subject of some discussion with Attorney Spata before. I don't want to veer outside of whatever her advice has been or whatever those discussions have, you know, involved. But there's no question that the school system is an independent employer and has, you know, unilateral authority to hire within position or for, with respect to positions that have been budgeted or with respect to which an allocation has been made. I don't think, if I'm hearing Mr. Clarkson correctly, I think that's consistent with what he's saying. I think if the committee wants us to have a conversation, you know, internally with Dr. Cobbs about what the process has been and what his authority is with respect to budgeted positions and how the process should work, I think we absolutely could do that and perhaps should do that if there's any confusion about it.
I mean, our last meeting, we had over 100-plus positions and there was, I believe, 88 that was already budgeted for that was unfilled. So, there should be no procedure to hire those. And it seems that that's what's carrying on. That shouldn't be carrying on. Mr. Clarkson, I, I know you're, you know, you're in your position, but take a walk inside of some of our schools, specifically this one. I spent three and a half hours in there. It needs to be staffed. And this process that's going on is hampering that. That's concerning.
I'm quite certain that it is, and I don't disagree with you.
I truly believe like this process and what we need to do is that needs to be eliminated and let the school district do what it has to do to get the school staffed.
And on that point, we can respectfully disagree because I think no one is well-served. If we wind up on June 30th with a deficit again and the Commonwealth comes in and takes over.
But it's already budgeted.
But, yeah.
If I put a budget forward before you for 1,500 positions and there's only 1,000 filled, it means there's 500 positions that still need to be filled, correct?
So, your math is correct, but I think in practicality, the problem we ran into before was that there were positions that were approved but didn't have funding behind them. And so, what we're trying to do is to ensure that when a position is requested to be filled, even though it was approved last year and somebody worked in that position, that doesn't mean that there's enough money in this budget. And there's a confluence of a couple of dynamics here as well. It's not only that the school department was in a deficit, it's that based on declining enrollment, you made some adjustments to staffing levels outside of the deficit to actually meet the enrollment, the declining enrollment and the associated funding with it. So, there are a couple of different dynamics, I believe, that are impacting your staffing levels. So, as I mentioned earlier, we continue to refine that process to make it as quick and as efficient as possible. That's why we meet in person for several hours because we're very serious about our responsibilities and very committed to helping Dr. Cobbs and all of you be successful. But we're equally as committed to ensuring that we get to June 30th without a deficit. Because now that we know that there's a deficit, if that happens, we're, we're all responsible. And I'm working tirelessly to make sure that that doesn't happen.
I mean, we were already in a deficit because we were shorted on our net. What was presented to the council wasn't what this body voted for under whose recommendation. So, a lot of this stuff doesn't add up. It doesn't. It doesn't make any sense.
Let me just correct the factual assertion that you made there. That is not correct. Since I've been here, and that's five budgets now, the school department has always, as long as Mayor Sullivan's been mayor, been granted exactly what is requested for net school spending. And in every year, we have been over, exceeded the state's requirement for net school spending. I think what you're discussing is the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago about non-net school spending. And what I learned and my discussion with Cliff Murray is that actually, we believe, so, the request to us was for 15 million for non-net school spending without significant documentation on what was behind that 15 million. So, what we said is, we're going to recommend 11 to the city council. And once we get through the year, if your spending is to the point where you need more money, we'll go back and get more. But what I believe now, based on what I know from Dr. Murray and his good record-keeping, is that that was indeed an appropriate number and that the transportation needs of the city can be fulfilled with the amount that was provided by the city council. We'll see. We've got a lot of the year left. But one of the challenges that I and Jim Cobbs and Bob Sullivan and all of you have faced is trying to understand the financial needs of the school department without significant documentation. You heard TJ speak earlier about how the situation here mirrors the situation that he had in Springfield. And so, we're trying to create accountability and an infrastructure from the ground up so that on any given day, if any of you or anyone in the audience asks, we want to know what the city's position is with the idea grant. We're going to be able to tell you and show you what we've spent. And that's what we're building. But all of it with an eye toward making sure that the Brockton Public Schools are solvent. And that above all has to be our goal because that's directly related to our ability to educate the children of the city.
I truly understand that, but in education, we are not to end our budget with a surplus. It's to spend every dime on the students. So, take that into account.
Understood. Yeah. Yeah. Agreed. And in communities where I've worked, I understand that dynamic and have always worked closely with school departments to that end so that you have the resources you need to do the job. So, if our collective goal is to get to that endpoint, then that's what we do. But the way we get there is by making sure we can get there and that we don't exceed that number. And that's the challenge before us.
Dr. Cobbs, could you, point of information, could you just give an update relative to what Mr. Rodriguez said? Like, where are we from the last time we were here with the amount of numbers that were outstanding to be filled? And could you just all give us all a status update on those? I think that's helpful.
As we did at the last school executive session, we looked at close to 100 positions that hadn't been filled. Of those 100 positions, maybe about 80, 88 or so, of those positions that had not been filled, about maybe 12 were new positions that needed to be created or change positions. So, those are the ones that went into this process of getting approved through the position control. The other positions, we've been able to at least advertise for them. Some of them we filled, I've signed a few, but, you know, it's late in the school year. So, it's not that we're going to get, you know, teachers readily to fill those positions. So, as I mentioned in the executive session, you know, we will, and Troy mentioned already, we will have to make some adjustments to the line items to move money from positions that are not filled to substitute positions, to, you know, for the substitute budget. So, we've posted most of them, but again, we're still waiting to fill some of them. They're slowly to be getting filled.
Out of the, out of the ones that you've filled since that time, what's a rough number on that, do you know?
I want to say I probably signed 10 to 12, you know, letters of, you know, welcome to teachers in the system.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, any follow-ups on that? Any members, Ms. Rivas-Mendez, please.
Troy, you were mentioning that we have four categories. That's what we had approved on the last time we voted for the budget. And you also said that there's ability to be able to move money from those four categories that we voted on. Is that what you said, correct?
Yes.
So, then, my question is, because we need teachers in front of students, as we see what's happening in the high school, if kids, like, I know Mr. Homer mentioned it, being in the cafeteria, we're only in October, some of these kids are missing lots of minutes of classroom time and then actually leaving the schools. So, my question to you is, I understand the position control is because we're in this deficit from budget 2023. And the idea is that 2024, that doesn't happen again, but is there any way that we can move money from one category to another because this is an urgent matter? And I do understand what Dr. Cobbs is saying, like, it's hard to fill the positions now because we're in October. But I just wonder, why isn't this priority, like, the kids have been in school for about six weeks. That's six weeks of like many minutes lost, especially special education related services. And this is something that constituents keep emailing us about, keep calling us about. Like, it's just, like, I understand there's this whole thing on the deficit, but like, I just wonder, like, overall, are we thinking about, you mentioned the students, but are we actually really thinking about the students when we're thinking about everything?
I can't answer that question in the collective, but I can certainly answer it for myself. And the answer is an unequivocal yes. It is a priority. And we're working, as I said, tirelessly every day. And both I and members of my team have stepped up. And in addition to doing all the regular work that it takes to run the city of Brockton, have taken on the added responsibility. Many of them are Brockton residents and care deeply about this community and the schools. And so, I would just submit to you that it is an absolute priority, that we've been done a great disservice by being in this deficit. But we can't ignore it. And so, we're trying to, at the same time, quantify exactly what that deficit is and come up with some strategies about how to satisfy it. And in the coming weeks, I will have discussions with you at this meeting about that very fact because we're close, I think, to both quantifying and satisfying the deficit. But at the same time, and all the work that that entails, providing support to Dr. Cobbs and his team so that this year, this school year, is funded in a way that it meets your goals. And I won't say that's a Herculean task, but it's certainly significant. But we are, I know, I see it in the eyes of the people that work for the schools and the people that work on my team every day, how committed they are to doing it. And it's a sea change for folks that we're introducing processes and workflows that have not existed before. And it's a significant change to, and we have people who are extremely dedicated professionals that work over here at the schools. And there's uncertainty, right? And not just with the educators, but with the support staff as well, and wondering if they have a job. But they're suiting up and showing up every day and doing the best that they can. So, I will assure you and I will assure the public that this is an absolute priority for the people with whom I work every day.
So, I guess, and I'm not questioning your commitment or other people's commitment, what I'm questioning is, if it's a priority, it just seems like it's being very slow. Things run very slow. And I understand you're saying there's processes and there's things that have to be in place that weren't in place before. But, I mean, our students can't wait. So, why isn't it quicker? Like, what's the timeframe that we have now in regards to being able to make sure we don't have a deficit, but making sure that, because the later we wait in the year, me as an educator, the, it's going to be, it's going to be, excuse me, it's going to be, the later we wait in the year, the harder it is to get educators. So, I just wonder, why are we in October, almost November, and this is the conversation we're having, versus it being a priority when it was in September?
Well, I don't know what more I can say to convince you that it's a priority. But what I can tell you is just today, we sent over, I don't know, a dozen, I, I'll use that figure, but let me be crystal clear. I'll use that figure, but let me be crystal clear. It's not exact forms for multiple hires. It's not as simple as looking at a budget. And let's say there's $7.9 million left in full-time salaries. And we wanted to hire five people at $100,000 apiece. Well, there's $7.9 million left, so of course we have the money. Obviously, we all know it's not that simple because we have to look at how many people are hired right now, what their salaries are, what it's going to take to get them out to June 30th. And then do an analysis of, based on what's being requested, do we have enough to get to June 30th with those positions? So the analyses are, in some cases, complex. And some of them are grant funded and we have to go back. And we have some challenges with record keeping to make sure that there are sufficient grant funds. And so I hear the frustration every day, believe me, I know. But all I can do is continue to assure you that, as I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, we're refining the process so that it can be more efficient and quicker. We understand that and we're working at it. And you have no bigger advocate for the pace at which we're filling these positions than your acting superintendent. You know, he's either on the phone or on an email or on a text to me multiple times a day advocating for that. And so, and we're doing the best we can because I know what kind of pressure he's under. You know, I've been in the crucible before. And so we're trying to do the best we can to make this work.
So thank you about the best you can, and thank you, Dr. Cobb's. But again, is there a timeline or is it just kind of like figuring it out as we go?
Well, I'm not sure how to answer the question because if you can be more specific. But the timeline is, as soon as we get those requests to fill positions, we have people that go right to work and start the analysis. And so I don't think that there are more than a couple, unless a bunch more came over today, that there are a whole bunch of forms that are waiting to be analyzed and approved. So the majority, vast majority of what's been requested. There are a couple more that we sent back today, looking for additional information, budget codes or actual salaries for positions so that we understand what the financial impact is. But I've said this before tonight, the initial setting up this process did take some time. But we had to make sure it was accurate and accountable. I promised you that when I stood up here for the first time. So I understand the frustration that has caused. But in the long run, it's something that we had to do because of the position that we were in. So those forms now, when they're being provided, will be turned around much more quickly than they were before.
All right, thank you.
Just to speak to that, to add, I support what Troy said. We probably today received, I think, 25 of the forms back. And so the process now is to post the positions for higher. And those five, I think, that came that need more additional information. So it did take a long time to set up the process, but it is in place and they are turning them around. So when I sign them, I'm the last person to review them and sign them. I'm confident that the money is there. And again, we've costed it out and we can afford to hire these teachers. So it did take a while to set up, but it is, it is today, actually really today, it started to move faster.
Mr. Homer, please.
I have to jump back in one more time, sorry. So I know, Mr. Clarkson, you mentioned how the non-net school spending is where. Mr. Rodriguez was mentioning just that there's, the budget that we requested was for net school spending and we meet that budget. And the net school spending is what pays for the salaries and the educators and the professionals.
Yes.
So if we're fully staffing that, I think it seems like there's a discrepancy between position control and cost control. And if we have open positions, it's our responsibility to fill those positions. I know that that's, I mean, it's tough to say, but I mean, that's if it's going to cost money and it's going to, if we're going to have a. I know, I know, it sounds like you're trying to plan out how far in advance through the end of the school year, what those positions would cost to actually staff them with the people that apply. And I think I understand that's because you might get somebody coming in on a higher step who costs more money than maybe what the position was that was vacated by the previous person. So maybe it's going to cost more money to staff that position through the rest of the year. Just again, for the benefit of the public watching too, if, Dr. Cobb's, if this is correct too, those people coming in after October 1st are now going to be on a one-year hiring for now. They're not going to be coming in and sitting in for a long position. Their hiring and their ability to keep the position is going to be subject now to review at the end of the school year because they didn't start their year of employment before September 1st. I think what's probably, what we're doing is we're chasing after a train that's already left the station. And we're going to be in this jam next year too. Because we're still going to have classrooms where we don't have teachers. We have people that we're bringing in now late who may have that insecurity about where they're going to be next year as well. And we're going to be in the same loop again and again and again. And the people who are looking for jobs are going to take those jobs when they know that they can get right in and get security and get right to work in September. I'm just afraid that if we, if we don't commit to spending the money to get professionals in front of the kids and maybe cut costs in the other areas where we can. I mean, we may have painful cuts in the non-net spending where we can. I know, obviously, we got to keep the lights on, like you said earlier. There's things that we have to pay for. But like Mr. Rodriguez said, we're going to pay for this again and again. By, and what Mr. Rivas Mendez said, we're going to pay for this by not having the professionals in front of the kids. And I know, again, respectfully, I understand too, it's hard to find people that aren't working who want to get into the classroom. But it's not like there's 200 people knocking on our door to fill 100 positions. I understand that. But I just think, you know, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I don't think we should be talking about position control. I think we should be talking about cost control. And I think position control, it would make sense if we were trying to hire the 131st person after we had cut 130 positions. We made the cuts to positions. So maybe the larger question is, maybe we didn't cut deep enough. And maybe that's what's not being said. And maybe we didn't reduce enough staff. But the problem is, is we made the cuts and we lost more than 130 people because other people left the district as well to go get other jobs somewhere else. So we didn't make any savings in staffing. We lost more people who went to other, other school districts. And our kids are sitting in cafeterias now without educators six weeks into the school year. And then we're going to ask them to perform to the highest level on MCAS. And it's, we're going to keep chasing our tail until we get people into the school. And I'd really hate to see the position control being, you know, scrutinizing that piece versus, you know, scrutinizing costs that are associated with materials or other items that maybe that's where we really need to take an axe to that section and, but get the staff into the classrooms with the kids. Thank you.
So, Mr. Homer, I just want to add, so when the employees come in now or whatever time this year, they're not all one-to-one contracts. And unless they're subs, you know, they're subject to not being hired next year. But if we hire teachers, like now, there will be union members and they have, they're subject to 90 days of the Massachusetts state law. And then from that point, they're actually union members. So they would presume to be returned next year.
Mr. Sheriff, I could.
Sure.
Just, so TJ is watching from home. And he just made a great suggestion, I will not take credit for it. I think one of the things that we can do collectively that will address what you just said is come together in January and actually put a supplemental budget before this body. So it's reworking and rethinking what the spending priorities are, having a public discussion about what the spending priorities are. And it's just, I think in that sense, you're just validating the work that you did when you voted the budget last June. But I think now, through the lens of what's occurred and having the public and our unions and our employees and all of you have some input, eyes wide open of what those spending priorities are. And so if you think that's a good idea, we can get to work on that and work with the chair and vice chair to put together something that reflects what you think those spending priorities should be.
Mr. Clarkson, also maybe if we could, and I know, you know, we're short on people right now. People are overworked and again, we're very thankful. But maybe we can take this tool and see if there's some line items here that could be cut, right? Or could be at least minimized in terms of some expenses. You know, there has to be some stuff in here that could definitely be marginalized in terms of a dollar amount. So again, not to put more balls in the air, but I think that would be a good exercise. So, but I'm going to continue to open up the school committee members. Mr. Rodriguez, follow-up, please.
Just one question. When did this position control take effect? Like what day, like what date, what month?
I don't know the exact date. It was, it was sometime after Dr. Cobb's took over, shortly after. And I think I was asked to step in about the same time. So whenever date that was.
Okay. I know I made a request. I don't know if, how quick you can get it, but I would like to see a breakdown of the actual school committee budget going back to 2020, just to see how that money was actually spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any other members have any questions for the CFO or for Dr. Cobb's at this time? Seeing none, we're.
Mayor, I was just going to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mill.
Subject to the committee's preference and Dr. Cobb's thoughts, I can talk to Sarah or Attorney Spatafor about setting up a meeting ahead of the next school committee meeting with Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Clarkson to discuss the process. And to the extent there are any questions that arise or any legal nuances and the like, we could talk about those in a Zoom or an in-person meeting if the committee, you know, thinks that would be a good idea.
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay.
Yep. But I'm just one of eight. So is there, is there any objection to that?
No.
It's a legal counsel, yes, you could. Any other questions relative to this agenda matter? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Consent agenda, which is agenda item, thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Drive careful. Consent agenda is.
Thank you, Troy.
Item four. There's A, B, C, and D. What is the will of the committee? Would we take them out collectively or would we take any out individually? What's the will? Ms. Azak, please.
I'd like to remove item, item letter B.
B is in boy, okay.
Thank you.
Any other, any other matters to be taking out? What is the will of the committee relative to A, C, and D at this time?
Motion to approve items A, C, and D.
Second.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. Sullivan. I think it was duly seconded by Ms. Azak and Mrs. Sullivan. If I could just read that into the record before we take a vote, please. A is the approval of August 15, 2023 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. C is request for authorization to submit proposals and expenditures of funds. Mass Brockton Cultural Council STARS residency grant in the amount of $5,500 and then target assistance grant in the amount of $200,000 even. And then D is the acceptance of human resource notifications, appointments certified personnel, appointments non-certified, and then personal actions, which is leaves of absences, resignations, retirements. We do have a motion that was duly seconded to take A, C, and D collectively and approve those. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. If you object, kindly raise your hand. They pass. We will now go to B, Ms. Azak.
Thank you. So we'd like to amend the minutes of the regular school committee meeting on August 15th. So under the motion, under unfinished business, if we can have the minutes reflect, Ms. Azak made a motion to approve the Brockton High School dress code policy as stated, but the word hooded would be removed from item seven. And it was properly seconded by Mr. Homer. So if we can have that correction made.
And you wanted to take that, I'm sorry, on unfinished business?
So it was under, in the minutes, under unfinished business. It was, a motion was made to approve the dress code. I guess the word hooded wasn't in there or something.
Okay.
So if we can just make the correction. I think it's under item three.
So that's the form of a motion?
Yep. If we can have a motion to just make the changes reflected in the minutes.
This motion made, is there a second on that, please? Is there a second on that motion relative to?
Don't all rush.
No, I'm sorry. I was just, I was trying to double check to see if I have that spot. I think I have it. And it was, if I'm looking at it correctly, on the, it does say Ms. Azak made a motion to approve it, approving bullet points one, two, three, four, five, six, and eight, as stated in the handout. But is that what you're referring to, Ms. Azak? Is that the one about item seven is missing, is that right?
So item seven with the word hooded would be removed from item seven.
Yeah, okay. Because I remember that as well because I seconded, but I just didn't see it in here. Now I understand what's missing.
Sure.
Thank you, yeah, second, I would second that.
All right, so a motion was made by Ms. Azak. It was duly seconded by Mr. Homer relative to that amendment. Any questions on the motion? Motion's made, properly seconded, all in favor, kindly raise your hand. Raise your hand if you oppose, it does pass, thank you for that. We will now go on to unfinished business, which is agenda item number five. Vote requested, 10-3-23 Policy Manual Subcommittee Meeting Recommendations. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. So the Policy Manual Subcommittee met on October 3rd. I'm the chair of that, so I was present, Mr. Homer was present, and Mrs. Rivas Mendez was present. Mrs. Sullivan was absent that day. So, let's see what we have here. So we do have some policies that we had pulled aside as part of the policy manual. They were pulled aside because we needed clarification. So some of the policies were staff personnel, security and safety, domestic violence leave policy, Family Medical Leave Act, teachers' personnel file, employment of principals, professional staff supplementary pay plans, philosophy of staff development, retirement of support staff members. So those were part of a motion that was made by Mr. Homer to hold off voting on those policies until we got feedback from our HR department. So that motion was made and it was properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez and the motion passed unanimously. The next motion was made by Mr. Homer to hold internet acceptable use policy, G, B, E, C, A, for further discussion. And it was properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez. That motion passed unanimously as well. The next motion was made by Mr. Homer to approve the policies that were read separate from the ones to be held in section G. And that was properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez. And that passed unanimously. The last motion was made by Mr. Homer to accept the proposed changes or no changes to section H. And that was properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez and that motion passed unanimously. So those were all part of the policy manual. I do know we will be scheduling another meeting to finish up some of the policies, hopefully before the end of the year. So, and we will have the motion where Mr. Homer had some of those policies pulled out, we're going to have HR and I believe IT come before us. So if we can just get a motion to approve these minutes. So a motion to approve the minutes from the October 3rd Policy Manual Subcommittee Meeting? Motion to approve the minutes from the Policy Manual Subcommittee Meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez, properly seconded by Mr. Homer. Any questions on that? Motion was made, it was duly, properly seconded. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. Raise your hand if you oppose, it does pass. We will now go on, vote requested, 10-10-23 Security, Safety, Transportation Subcommittee Meeting Recommendations. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. So on October 11th, the Safety, Security, Transportation Subcommittee met. Present was myself, Mrs. Mendez, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mrs. Zalos was absent. We read into a motion, we requested to have, let's see what we have here. So a motion was made by Mr. Rodriguez to approve the acting superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, to move forward on conducting an audit of the Transportation Department. Mrs. Mendez seconded the motion and we were all in favor. It was unanimous. This request was brought forth to the Committee of a Whole for a potential vote this evening. So the Safety, Security, and Transportation Subcommittee has requested that the Committee of a Whole discusses tonight for a potential vote to have the acting superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, do an audit of the Transportation Department.
Could you, could you just define what that would mean? What an audit of the transportation? Is it a financial audit? Is it a performance personnel metrics audit? Like what does that mean?
I think it was a little of everything. It was a little of everything.
Performance and financial and structure.
Performance and financial and structure of the transportation, all top to bottom, to see if we are properly staffed, from bus drivers to the staffing, support staff, management staff across the board.
Do you, Mr., Dr. Cobb's, are you familiar, like, is there an organization that does that? Like, is it a regular audit in terms of like the big audit firms or is this a specialty? Like, how does that work?
Part of this will be done by TJ and the Open Architects, the group who will be doing this, but you know, it, it really is, an audit is probably not the, the most accurate description of it. It's more of like Tony said, organizational, from an organizational point of view, from a financial point of view, and also from the services rendered perspective, as, as we, I've mentioned a few times, we pay a lot of money to private vendors to transport our students for Kenny Vento out of district placements, and we need, you know, this audit to this, this performance audit should take a look at what do we need to do to remedy that? Do we need to purchase more buses? Do we need to hire more drivers? Is the organizational structure in place that will support that additional load and, and what would be the cost of that? So I've already initiated based on the, the Subcommittee, you know, vote to reach out to organizations. Actually, one I've reached out to, there's an organization called MAP, M A P T, but it's, you know, it's all about transportation students, buses. I've also reached out to our vendor that we purchased the buses from and Dr. Murray to work together to look at what would that structure? What would the cost look, look like? How many buses would it be? How many drivers? What's the train up, staff up of that and the, and the delivery of the vehicles as well? So that would be inclusive in the, in the.
It's a full-scale analysis of a department.
Analysis is probably more correct.
Of the department, of the Transportation Department. And so TJ and Open Architects, that group is gonna do some component of that, but then do we have to hire outside? Is there a cost associated with that or are they doing it all in-house?
That's to be determined. I, I would hope not, but I think we could, with the, the associates up here to work on that and, and the TJ and the other, you know, the Bluebird is where we bought the buses from. I think with that combination, we can, we can probably do it without having to spend any money on it, actually.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can just make a correction, we met on October 10th. October 10th, and, and I apologize, Dr. Cobb's was also present at the, at the meeting with us.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee relative to this matter that's before us? I entertain a motion then?
So are we doing the motion on the minutes or also doing the motion on the audit? Cause we need to.
The audit.
On the audit. So I would do the motion on approving the audit.
I don't think it's an audit though. It's not an audit, right? It doesn't sound like it's an audit per se. It's a full analysis of the department, right?
Analysis.
From, from A to Z, everything? Okay. So you're correct. I think we take, we take a motion relative to approving that analysis, and then if that passes favorable, unfavorable, then we'd have to do a standalone motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to have an analysis of the whole Transportation Department that's including financially and performance and structural.
So form of a motion made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any conversation on the motions? All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. That does pass. Now we should go back to the minutes as stated.
Motion to approve the October 10th, 2023 Security Safety Transportation Subcommittee Meeting.
So motion, is there a second? Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez, properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, sorry, Rodriguez. Late night already. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. Raise your hand if you oppose. It does pass. We will now, that concludes unfinished business. We will now go on to new business, and I'm gonna go to Dr. Cobb's at this time, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to discuss the, give you an update on the hiring of the principal for Brockton High School and a new business. We're still on track. We, we, the ad closes Thursday. At this point, I've received 11 resumes for people, some qualified people for the position, for the permanent position. So again, we, the target is to have that person in place by January 1st. But what I've decided to do in discussion, again, with the Cabinet and my Deputy Superintendent, is to take a step back. You know, we, since the beginning of the year, we, we focused on, we were all thrown into, the three of us, Tish, Aaron, and I, and, and Dr. Connors, in the midst of the high school to try to get it open, work with a new leadership team and, and get the school open and, and try to get it kind of organized and going. And we've, we've been in the fray for six weeks now, and now I feel that I can be better served for the district and the school to withdraw myself and, and as such, as I discussed with you a week ago, to put an acting principal in place until we hire the permanent principal. I want to announce tonight that that principal will be with, with Mr. Jose Duarte, who used to be the principal, retired as principal at the South Middle School. And he will start, if I could have him start tomorrow, it'd be nice, but he will start either this week or Monday. So he'll be in place for at least two months, you know, and he'll be the dedicated principal to Brockton High School, which, you know, all of us just do not have the time to do with the district jobs and myself wearing five hats. You know, the principal of high school needs more attention and a dedicated person to, to help develop the new leadership team as well as, you know, put policies in place and be the daily go-to person for the high school, so.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. I mean, it is your, in your capacity, your full authority to bring that person on. I, I was pleased when you told me today who that person was. He, he was a phenomenal leader at the South Middle School. So any questions or comments for Dr. Cobb's relative to, go with Mrs. Rivas Mendez, followed by Ms. Azak, please.
So I don't have questions on the actual hire, the recommendation of the hire. I just have a reflection piece here where I know when we made the vote to have our previous superintendent be the principal of Brockton High, I, I was, I was very vocal to say that is impossible, an impossible task. So I just think, I know some community members were about it, but it's a reflection piece to really understand when we put people in position, this is impacting the kids. Having a new principal, because we have to be proactive now, right? To then hire somebody else in January, like every leader that comes about is with new goals and a different vision. That's the autonomy that leadership in a school has, in a school as Brockton High School, where I know you, Mayor, are very proud to be a graduate for, and so many others, and all I hear is great things at Brockton High School. If we want this school to be the greatest of the greatest and continue to be that, then we have to make sure that we don't make decisions like we made before. It's crazy to me that we even thought that, that our previous superintendent could take on that task. So I just think it's a time to really reflect and really understand the importance and what we've been talking about, the positions, that it's almost impossible to do two or three roles in education. That's just, as an educator I'm speaking, that is completely impossible. So I just wanted to say that because I've been very frustrated with that. I know I've had my discussion with Vice Chair, and I continuously said, like, you know, this sounds like a white savior mentality, Kathy. I'm sorry, I'm gonna say that in public because I continuously said that. And it's like, it's, it's not cool in the sense, cool, cool to a lack, lack of a better word, but it's just not right. And it's not equitable that we're here now because of the vote that we made two, three months ago, thinking that that was gonna be possible. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivas Mendez. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Mrs. Rivas Mendez touched base on a couple of points that I was gonna make. So I just, I wanted to say, you know, Dr. Cobb's, I, I think this is a great decision. I appreciate you stepping in, not only stepping in as acting superintendent, but you took on principal, and now we're dealing with a deficit. So it's a lot for one person to take on. I've been up at the high school a couple of times. I've seen it. I think this is, this is what we need. We need to give our students a little bit of stability, get, get a principal in there so you can focus on other things that we need you to focus on. So I just want to say thank you, and actually, I'm glad that we're doing this now and not waiting till January and at least getting a principal in there while we find a permanent principal, but, and, and good, good choice on principal. I've worked with him. He, you know, when we served on the committee, he's come before us plenty of times, and we've seen him at, at South Middle, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azak.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Homer, please.
Thank you. That's, this is what leadership is. Thank you, Dr. Cobb's, for, you know, you know, making that analysis and to speak on Mr. Jose Duarte. His leadership speaks volumes, and that was a great choice to make sure to have somebody. I know it's a short, you know, window, but I think he's gonna be, he's gonna do some great things up here and, and build the morale and, and bring the school to where it needs to be with what limited resources that he's gonna have. So I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Homer, please.
Just echoing what my colleagues were saying too. I mean, having worked with Mr. Duarte before and, and just a short time on school committee, I do appreciate you putting him forward. I think, I know previously someone in the community had mentioned something about culture, but I think having had kids go through South Middle School, I mean, he was great in inspiring a culture there, and he'll have students here who are familiar with him from their time at South Middle School. So I think he'll be able to hit the ground running and he'll have familiarity with student population, and he'll bring that spirit, and I think he knows what he's taking on for two months, you know, to try and really align the school, and, and I hope that the kids have that same buy-in, that enthusiasm that we share for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Homer. Any other members have any questions or comments? Mr. Sullivan, please. Follow up, followed up by Mrs. Rivas Mendez.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Cobb's. A great job and a great choice.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Rivas Mendez, please.
So my question is on the transition. If they're doing two months and then we're hiring, and you're hiring for somebody in January, how does that transition look like? And how does that person coming in January going to be able to still use some of the effective things that, that, that will be happening from here on?
Well, that, that's a great question. Thank you. That transition process will be with the Cabinet, myself, and Deputy Superintendent Walter, and, and again, Dr. Connors, because we are the, the team that's been into high schools supporting the leadership team. So we will be there to support Mr. Duarte, and we'll, and, and I envision the transition that'll overlap for who knows how long between Mr. Duarte and the new person that we hire. And again, we will be there to support them. We will be there, you know, the vision hasn't changed. The proficiency commitment hasn't changed for the district. So we're, we're implementing that now with the teachers and the leadership staff, and, and that will continue. So the person that comes in, persons will have to just kind of pick up the ball. Yes, they'll have their own leadership style and their own, their own way of dealing with the staff and the students, but the overall proficiency commitment and leadership of the district will still be in place.
So when you say that, you guys will be able to help him, the Cabinet?
Absolutely.
So Mr. Duarte, it sounds like he's gonna be here longer.
And to further answer your question, I'm sorry, we, we plan to have a schedule with the leadership team, you know, the Cabinet team members being there every day of the week to support the, the principal and, and his leadership staff at the school. So we're developing that schedule now. So somebody, somebody from the, from the central office, the Cabinet team will always be there through the, through the transition process.
So then Mr. Duarte is here longer than December then? If he's gonna be able to help out that person?
It could be possibly. I told him two months at least, you know, and he worked out with his wife two months, and she was okay with that. So we'll see if we can stretch it any further like that. That I, I could envision, you know, you know, after the holidays, it, you know, if I can get him, to give me another couple of weeks to transition with the new principal, that would be helpful.
Okay. And if he's overlapping with the new principal, how does that look for our budget?
It's within our budget parameters. And again, you know, based on what that I'm going to pay him and the new principal, it's within the budget.
Because it sounds like there has to be some type of overlap?
Yeah, there does.
If he's gonna help out, then even though there's cabinet support, but it's like, you know, the way it works, I could, I can't explain it in, I don't have the language, but the way I'm thinking, it's like, I mean, yeah, there's like a crossover, right?
Yeah, there's a transition. There's, there's gotta be a, you know, overlapping transition, but you know, there's, there's monies, again, that, that's what I do. I, I've worked with budgets many years and, and again, as a nursing home operator, you know, we, there's monies where I know people are retiring, for instance, Dr. Murray, he'll be leaving in February, so that's gonna leave me half of his salary to work with, to work through this transition. So there's, there's other ways to, to work that in.
Thank you for that transparency.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. We, we do have to take a vote, like I said earlier in the meeting. Again, Tuesday, November 14th, we need to move to the Arnoon School Theater on Belmont Street due to the Brockton High School Drama Production here in the Little Theater. I do need a motion so that we could take a lawful vote to, to move our location for that specific evening, evening, November 14th. Is there a motion?
Motion to move the November 14th meeting to the Arnoon School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, was properly seconded by Mr. Homer. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. Raise your hand if you oppose. It does pass, and again, we will, you'll get an agenda, and it will not say the George M. Rom Little Theater, it will say the Arnoon, Dr. Arnoon School, and it will be in the theater there as well. Any other new business? Vice Chair, did you have any new business after speaking to Attorney Spatafor today? Or I know you'd mentioned earlier that there might be a meeting next week or?
Basically, we were talking about scheduling another meeting next Tuesday. I believe it's the 24th. It will not be a regular school committee meeting. It will be an executive session. And so after the discussion tonight in regards to putting music and arts on at 5:00, then at 6:00, we can do a policy meeting, policy committee meeting, and then we can have executive session after that at 7:00.
Attorney Mello, we, we would still have to duly notice it as a, as a, to be an agenda as a regular school committee meeting, but the agenda item after we go into hearing a visitor, we would then go into executive session, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And it'll be duly, duly noticed for 7:00 PM? Okay. Any, Ms. Azak, please.
Just a question. Where are we as far as, I know one of our last school committee meetings, we had, we chose some of the candidates to help us with the audit from the community. Where are we as far as, has, has anyone talked to them? Are we gonna meet them? Where are we as far as scheduling? I mean, time is of the essence, and we're going into November. I know we're not gonna rush it, but we really should get the ball rolling before January.
I think Jess has some.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, first of all.
I can share an update on that. I'm Jess Silva Hodges, everyone watching at home. I'm the Chief Marketing Communications Officer for the school district. I spoke to the four members, so we have three committed members plus one alternate. They're ready to go. They're eager to help as soon as you schedule dates or let them know when they're needed, they'll be here. So they, they've been apprised of their duties on the advisory committee, and they, they are very much willing and ready to, to get started.
And I will add to that and say that, and I, I feel bad saying this because I don't know if Ms. Campbell knows this already, but in talking to Attorney Spatafor, she was going to ask Ms. Campbell to reach out to all four over the next two weeks and give us dates that don't work for them so that we can schedule the meeting as soon as possible.
My other question would be, and I don't know if this is for Attorney Mello or maybe Jess knows this, has, has the, the, the ad been placed yet relative to the auditing firms that would apply that would be interested? Or maybe Dr. Cobb's, do you know that?
No.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. That, I think Attorney Spataford is working on that.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll reach out to Sarah tomorrow. Thank you.
So, Mayor, I mean, usually we, the majority of us keep our Tuesdays open, and if we can just try to see if they can make it for a Tuesday, that way we have other subcommittees sometimes going on, but I know the first week in November, the, the second week is obviously election, Tuesday, and then the week after that. So, if we can just try to pencil something in, just so we can at least meet the members, and then we're obviously going to have to start scheduling some, some meetings with them. We're going to, we're getting, we're getting close to holidays. People's schedules are going to get busy.
I don't think it would be a bad idea, since we're going to be having a meeting next Tuesday at 7:00, on an agenda item, we could introduce those folks to us, we could talk to them, and then we could go to our executive session? So, we could do a normal agenda, invite those, those four individuals to come and meet them and greet them, and, and then after we finish that, we could go to our executive session. Any objection on that? So, what do we?
Not unless they can't make next Tuesday.
Correct, correct. That's the caveat.
That's why, I mean, if it could be next Tuesday, I'm like, the goal was to reach out to all four of them?
Yep.
And basically say, what doesn't work for you?
Okay.
So that we could pick the soonest date and get them in front of us. If it can be next Tuesday, it'll be next Tuesday.
But when we selected that, they have to have the ability, so it's not a question of when you're available, like, they know we meet on Tuesdays. We clarified that, that if you are, want to be part of this committee, you have to make yourself available. So, I don't think we want to know when. So, if we schedule that, they have to be, if they can't fulfill those needs, then we move on to the next candidate. This isn't something that, of convenience, so.
So, Ms. Campbell, that would be my recommendation, to tell them that according to Mr. Rodriguez, like, the ability for them to be here Tuesday night is part of their agreement to applying for this position, and so if we can have them all here next Tuesday, I would say, let's do 5:00 for music and arts, 6:00 for policy, and then maybe the first entered, and agenda item on the regular school committee at 7:00, we'll be introducing them, and then we'll jump into executive session. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, I think what we would do, again, we would do agenda calling a meeting, have some quorum, salute the flag, right? Then we do hearing of visits, and then Agenda Three, we would go into, to those folks, and then we'd go into executive session. That would be Agenda Four.
Yep.
Any questions or comments or observations on that?
Sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
So, is, Jess Hodges? So, are we, is, are we waiting to meet with the members before we post for the audit